...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have all board members in attendance currently. Before we move forward with the approval of the agenda, does anyone have announcements for this evening?
Yeah, Mike, I just want to say that Dennis and I sat in on Michelle Laers' online teaching session, and while online is not the ideal situation, she did an amazing job. It was really something to partake in. So I think if someone else also saw...
I did as well to Michelle and Mark's class.
Tricia did also.
I sat in both Mark and Michelle's.
I guess, Mike, I'd just like to shout out and thank the Clarence Schools and Richmond Foundation for making a $500 contribution to the Clarence Youth Bureau's Angel Project that helps students in the elementary school buildings through the holidays.
Could I entertain a motion to approve the agenda for this evening?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carries. In our packet, we have meeting minutes from the Board of Ed Session and Executive Session on November 16th. If there's no questions, can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion, Mike, to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carries. Okay. Next item on the agenda is correspondence. There's an item noting that we have received a number of communications concerning property taxes, as well as communications concerning the reopening of schools. As of the last communication check that I did, we had two concerning taxes since the last board meeting, and five to the whole board concerning the reopening of schools. I would also like to note for the record, we had one additional communication concerning curriculum question around seventh and eighth grade curriculum, which we will be following up on. Moving forward, before we get to the superintendent's report and an update on the reopening plan, we have the first of our two public comment sessions for this evening. I know there's a number of people in attendance. Certainly, just again for everybody's reference, we have a public comment session now, and then one after Dr. Hicks gives the update, and we run through some more procedural items. So you're welcome to speak to the board at this point if you'd like. If you do, there's a microphone on either side. If you would just approach, state your name and address for the record, and happy to hear your comments.
I'm prepared. Hi, good evening. My name is Taria Parsons. I'm at 5348 Glenview Drive, and I'm the parent of two kids in the Clarence School District, a third grader and a sixth grader. And I'm here tonight because there are a number of parents, like me, as you can see, but many more also, that are seeing firsthand the damaging effects of our children of not learning in person. Education, obviously, we're seeing the effect on that. Their mental and physical health, you know, we don't need to see the data, we're living the data. And I don't think there's any disagreement on this. We're also seeing the data from Erie County, we're seeing the data from New York State, we're seeing the data from numerous scientific studies, and it's shown without question that in-school transmission is very low. Again, I don't think there's any question about that. And this should be a cause for excitement, and perhaps even the creation of a more robust school schedule. We did it, and it worked really well, and I have to really praise you all for your hard work and what you've done in our schools. But no matter, excuse me, no matter what the rate of community spread, if we follow protocols, there should be no reason for schools to be closed. So the science supports this. The question is, why are you doing this? If we all agree on the science and that this is hurting our children, the obvious question is, again, why are we closed? What changed between the Monday announcement of opening and the Wednesday announcement of closure? I would also like to understand the teacher's response to the opening on the 14th. What you need to understand is that for our children, every day in school matters, every day out of school is taking its toll, and I'm not being dramatic when I'm saying that our children are really dying inside. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi, my name is Catherine Salin, and this is my sister Julie. Hi, my name is Catherine Salin, and this is my sister Julie. We are nine years old and go to Sheridan Hill. We are in fourth grade. Julie is my twin sister, but I'm older by 16 minutes. We are opposites. I'm left-handed, she's right-handed. I like cats, she likes dogs. I play piano, she plays the guitar. But one thing we both agree on is that we both miss going to school a lot. We both miss seeing our friends, even though we wear masks and sit as far apart as we can with plastic in between us. It is good to see them in person and not over a computer. Learning from home was fun at first. I got to be around my pets all day. Julie loves our dog, Corny, and he is right beside her when we do our learning from home. Sometimes he pops up on the computer screen during school. But sometimes it's hard to stay focused at home. We have our own desks that our mom set up for us, and most of the time it is quiet, but I can still hear my sister stomping and playing. I use my headphones, but sometimes they don't work. Sometimes my computer freezes and my teacher can't hear me. Sometimes it's hard to do my assignments online. It's way easier to give it to my teacher in person. We missed our teachers, too. She's a great teacher, and we want to be able to see her in person. Being on the computer, my eyes got tired, even though we wear glasses. My sisters sometimes get a headache, too. I'm not afraid of COVID because we sanitize, wear masks, stay six feet apart, and our classes split into two groups, the AM group and the PM group. I wash my hands a lot, and my mom's a meat freak, so she makes us clean a lot. I don't think there is one case of COVID at my school, and I think that is because we are really careful. I think if malls, gyms, and the place my mom gets her hair done at is open, then my school should be too. Thank you for listening to me tonight.
Thank you.
My name is Teri Geiger. I live at 5035 Goodrich Road. I currently have a high school senior, but I also have a daughter who graduated in 2019. And I'm here to talk about, I guess, to just point out some data for why we should be open when we're not. I'm baffled by the decision. I went and looked at some districts who have opened and compared their positive COVID cases to their population, and Hamburg, Lancaster, Orchard Park, and Williamsville are the ones I looked at. And Clarence is currently at 2.08% positivity, and the other schools range from 3.2% to 3.42%. So clearly, they're making it work. I don't understand why we can't make it work. We're a top district. We should be able to make it work. My daughter was excited to come back to school. I don't understand, I don't think the data is showing anything else than these kids should be back in school. And I think we deserve a detailed explanation. I mean, the reasons cited was the increase in cases in Clarence and Erie County, but these schools are doing it. We should be able to do it. Thank you.
I'm going to ask if the kids could just be removed from the room for a second. You guys can come back just after I talk. Don, can you close the door, too? Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Amy Leach. My address is 8953 Amy Lee Lane in Clarence Center. I've been here with you guys for like the last six months. I'm usually by myself, so thank you so much, parents, for showing up. I appreciate the kids coming to speak because that's what it really is all about. I appreciate you taking the time to listen to us this evening, because our kids and us deserve more. They are suffering physically, mentally, psychologically, and emotionally, and not from the virus itself, but from the environment that they are forced to be in. Most kids aren't wired to succeed in this type of environment, which is why most of us choose to school in a classroom over homeschooling. If something doesn't change soon, we will have more than just a COVID-19 pandemic on our hands. In fact, we are already seeing severe setbacks in children due to this situation. We are hearing of kids across the globe committing suicide, attempting suicide, or being admitted into facilities due to an immense amount of pressure and isolation. These kids, and if you haven't heard of them, some of them are Spencer Smith, Olivia, Sarah, Ann Long. A nine-year-old from Monroe County, which is just next door, hung himself from a fan two months ago because of isolation. These kids were all portrayed as otherwise happy, healthy, and successful prior to this pandemic and shutdown. Furthermore, there are increased reports of abuse and unimaginable accidents, as the case with Adon Janos, who didn't have supervision at home while remote learning. Our kids need us more than ever. They need us to make carefully and thoughtful decisions and to follow the science, especially when making the decision to open or close. We can't continue to treat our kids as yoyos. The decision to open was not based on science. In fact, I'm not sure why we couldn't open today, because the community spread excuse is just that, an excuse. So many of us parents had delivered news, exciting news, to our kids that we would be open today, and yet, two days later, we were told that we had to deliver an opposite message. It was a hard message for some parents to deliver, that even after hundreds of kids were tested on Wednesday with no positives, that they would not be able to come back. It caused even more stress and anxiety for both children and parents. I have a kiddo who refuses to do work. We have pulled the PS4 away, we've taken a phone away, he won't even sit with us and do work. What am I supposed to do with my freshman, who is otherwise a high honor roll student, who, by the way, is special ed with an IEP? What am I supposed to do with him? Just pull him out of school? Parents have bent over backwards, canceled plans, adjusting holiday gatherings to keep everyone safe, and the schools open. Using community numbers and numbers we can't even validate or see the raw data for is irresponsible. We should be using the numbers that our staff and kids reported last week. Those numbers are a testament of how determined we are to get back to school. Many of these kids are excited and hopeful to see their friends, the teachers, and school staff before departing for the holidays. Actually, many kids need that. They needed to see their teachers before leaving for the holidays. We need to stop disappointing and failing our children. A couple of weeks ago, a survey was circulated to the high school students about Clarence rebranding and selecting a new logo. Is this how we prioritize our children? Is this the message we send to parents and kids? Our energy needs to be put elsewhere, because let's face it, our kids are more important than a rebranding strategy for the school. I'm urging you, the board, teachers, and the teacher union to reprioritize our kids. I would hate for another child to fall victim to another statistic, as we've seen in stories across the U.S. The kids and parents have done their best to be flexible and to give the teachers and district flexibility. It's time for the district to make adjustments for the good of our children. I have read on social media complaints from all of our parents. I've evaluated what's happening with my own kids. We have listened to other parents in tears over what's happening with their kids and families at home. It's now time to address the things being said in the community. So with that said, I'm asking you, I have four things that I'm begging you to make a decision on. One is the elementary school kids. I don't have an elementary school kid, but I'm speaking for the parents that I've talked to. They need more time. They only have two and a half hours. Now, we understood what that was when they were in school because of busing, they had to get the kids in and out. There's no reason, because we're remote now, that the kids can't get an extension on their day, even if it's by a half hour. Also, Wednesdays. Parents are complaining that Wednesdays now for the elementary schools are a half of a half a day. They're getting an hour. They need more. Again, I don't have an elementary school, but these are the things that I'm hearing from the parents. Number two, high schoolers need a break. This is very near and dear to my heart, because last week, my daughter, every single day was up until 2:00, 3:00 o'clock in the morning, trying to chase assignments and get things done. She's exhausted, she has circles under eyes, she's dizzy, she can't concentrate. She works really hard at her grades, too. It doesn't come easy. She also has a 504. I am begging you to try to give these high schoolers a break. From online learning, from assignments, and needing time to catch up, some high schoolers are forced to multitask during classes. I know Mr. Smith came out with a message to them that said, "Don't multitask during classes." They don't have a choice. My daughter has five late assignments right now. She slept for nine hours throughout the day on the weekends. She was up through the night all last week. It's not that she's not doing the work. We need to pull back all of, we need to stop the all-nighters, and we need the kids to have a break. They also need help. We appreciate the tutoring schedules, but many kids don't have open periods. We are asking that the district consider half-day Wednesdays. Have them get up, mark attendance, most of us parents won't care if that's all it is, and let them get caught up. Let them have one day of a break without being online. It is causing irreversible damage to our kids. They need a break. Number three, teachers need to ease up on the number of virtual tools they are using for learning and get back to basics. They need to put the brakes on all of our in-class and additional homework. Kids can't finish class assignments during their school periods, so they are forced to complete them in the evening on top of their additional homework assignments. Group projects are difficult to complete online via FaceTime and take much of the students' time. Kids are used to working face-to-face with each other when they have to do group work. The time that they would do that in school is tripled when they have to do it online. They have to figure out other people's schedules, they have to contact their friends or who they're paired up with. It doesn't work. However, they also are assigned other tasks on top of all of these other assignments. So you have in-class assignments that aren't done, classes are shortened, some of the teachers are using some of the same assignments they used two years ago. It doesn't work. Something needs to change. There is still a huge reliance on applications like YouTube, NoRed Inc., Ed Puzzles, et cetera. Kids need a break from screen time. It's just too much. And it takes time to rewind and re-watch the lessons or assignments, specifically for kids with IEPs and 504s. They need their live teacher, not another application. And I don't, I will not buy the excuse that it can't happen. One of your awesome math teachers, Mrs. Karate, teaches every single assignment, just like she would do in class. She gives one homework assignment a night, she gives her tests and her quizzes, and it's working. She is a perfect example that teaching like you did before can still work now. Number four, please reiterate to teachers about late assignments, special ed accommodations, and the flexibility that our district promised us. Parents are constantly needing to email and be that voice for our kids. It's getting exhausting. Some teachers are still taking points off for kids being late with assignments. This is causing undue stress and anxiety for our children and parents. We need more understanding with due dates. Lastly, holiday break. Kids need a break. Parents need a break. They need a break from constantly playing catch-up, chasing end-of-quarter grades and makeups, and need downtime and time away from the screen. My kids haven't had a real school break since before last March, besides the summer. They spent Easter break and any days off and Thanksgiving break catching up on assignments and newly ones assigned. They're not spending time with their family, they're not spending time with their friends, whether it's online or together. They need a break. I am begging that teachers take this into consideration as we move closer to December 24th. Maybe that second Ed puzzle, video tutorial, or group project can be canceled. I don't know about others, but my kids need a real break away from school, particularly in the house. They are living, breathing, and eating school around the clock and drowning in work, so much so that some of these kids don't even care anymore. And this also means that parents don't get a break either. I spend almost every weekend and evening after work helping my children. This model isn't sustainable if you don't make a change. So I urge you to reprioritize and put the mental health of our kids and parents first, especially since it was your decision to not return until January 4th. We are upset and disappointed about this decision, specifically because our kids were expecting to be back today with their friends and with their teachers. And who had to deliver that message? Us, the parents. Thank you.
Is there anybody else who wants to make any comments at this time? All right. Seeing none, and as a reminder, we have another, oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry. Can I just say one thing?
Yes.
My name's Shannon Choalter. We have six kids in the district. I just wanted to say that everyone has their own reasons for why they want what they want, obviously, but we have some children, one with special needs, that isn't able to get all her therapies that she needs as a result of this. Being distance learning, and I don't think it's as efficient either, being, trying to do OT or PT over a computer for a six-year-old, isn't quite as good, and I've seen a lot of regression with her. And I'm just one parent, not to mention all the other parents with children with special needs, as well as I actually have, I know we all have unique issues, but I have another child who had a pretty bad brain injury last year. I brought him with me, and he physically cannot do any computer screens. He gets very, very ill. He has dizziness, and we've seen several neurologists. Turns out, there's a really good, one of the world-renowned neurologists in Buffalo. We're seeing the best of the best, and his guidance and direction to us is no computer screens. And I'm like, how am I supposed to do that? Like, that's impossible right now. So it left us with no other choice but to leave public school, and I have to homeschool, which is a very big sacrifice on our family. And one, when you pay a lot of money living in Clarence, and we chose Clarence for our district, leaves me feeling like we're very, I'm just very disappointed in the district, especially when we're hearing the results, and I can go over all, I mean, we all know the results with COVID and how it's not spreading in children, and how, I mean, out of what, the 300 cases that were tested, how many were positive? Zero. So I really feel like we need to have these children back in school. And I mean, I feel like you guys have done such a great job with the distance learning, with the computers and stuff, but it's not an end-all for everyone. Like, it doesn't work for everyone. There are some kids that are thriving, and they have that right to choose. They can stay in, if it's really working for that family, great, they can stay distance learning. We're not saying that they can't, right? There's no reason they can't stay doing distance learning. But for those people with unique needs, or, I don't, I don't, thank goodness, I'm a stay-at-home mom, but I don't know how in the world people are doing it when there's two families, two parent-working families. Like, I don't know how that's possible. And also, I'm very concerned about the children's emotional health. Obviously, there's a lot more that kids learn from school than just book learning. There's a lot of different things that they learn. So emotional health is a very big thing. I have, maybe that's why she has to sleep, but I have some stories that I've had friends just calling me crying where their kids are not in a good spot emotionally, and they're trying to get them help. I have one friend who had to admit their son to ECMC last week, and we all can figure out why without me saying with the kids in the room, but these poor kids, they need to be back in school. They need to have their sports, they need to have their socialization. Sure, they can do it behind plexiglass, just as you guys are all doing it here. It doesn't make sense that we can still do these things, that malls can be open, that restaurants can sort of be open. You know, they, these kids need us. We can't disappoint them. So that's it.
Any other comments? Any unfinished business before we move to Dr. Hicks? All right, you're up.
Thanks, Mr. Fuchs, and I want to thank everyone for coming and providing feedback. I also want to thank everyone who emailed me with feedback. I appreciate it. I did take it into account before making the decision. I'll give you my rationale tonight with the board. We may agree to disagree on some things, but we'll open it up, if it's okay with you, Mr. Fuchs, when I'm finished with the presentation, we can open it back up to additional questions by the people, by the community members in the audience. Okay? So a couple of things. It's been about three and a half weeks since we were put first into a yellow zone, and before we could procure the limited-service laboratory license to begin testing, we went into an orange zone. Once we went into an orange zone, we did apply for and gain the ability to begin testing. We couldn't start any sooner than last week. We did start testing Tuesday of last week. We've continued testing this week. Across the state, there's been about 500,000 test results of faculty, staff, and students in September. The positivity rate is low, at about 2.6% across the state. It's not exactly that in Clarence, but that's the long-term statistics. Executive Order 202.79 gave more definition to orange zones and red zones. So at first, when we first entered the yellow zone and the orange zone, the rules were you had to close down for four days. That was the initial stoppage and putting kids into the fully remote situation. That started on November 18th. There were different rules at that particular time about trying to test back into in-person schooling. Those rules back on December 18th were, you had to test 100% of the faculty, staff, and students who were going to come back, and you had to, after you tested all the kids and teachers who were coming back, you had to continue testing one quarter of them every week. We couldn't do that. We couldn't get the LSL in time, we couldn't, we couldn't get the consent of 100% of the parents. The way the orange zone was originally was impossible for us to have. About a week ago, we got new guidance on how you can test your way back in in an orange and a red zone. It went from 100% down to 20%. By that time, we had already canvassed people, because we had been in a yellow zone, to see who would provide consent. And we had close to 60% of parents say, "Yes, I would consent to having my child tested." And we had about 53% to 55% of the students, or I'm sorry, the faculty, staff, and the faculty and staff say that they would be willing to be tested as well. So we knew we would be able to do that. And last week, we got about 10% completed. There was one positive out of about 400, 350, 400 cases. This week, we've continued. There hasn't been another positive yet. We've done close to 700 tests so far. However, in order to come back, we must do 20%, first of all, you must be in the process of doing this. We will have the 20% of students and staff by this Friday completely tested. That will finish for us the one month, the one-month sample for December. If we turn into a red zone at any time, we have to bump the percentage up to 30% over a month, no more than about 15% in a week. So these are the new orange and red zone So these are the new orange and red zone regulations. They were made clear by guidance that came out Friday night a week ago, and then we, we went through that guidance on Monday. If you're either in an orange or a red zone, if the sampling generates nine or more positive cases in school, or a positivity rate of 2% to 3%, depending upon if you're in New York City or not, then the school is required to close. So one of the unanswered questions is, do the students we are informed of by the Department of Health count in this number of nine? If they do, we wouldn't be able to open the high school this week because we had nine last week. And we have been unable to get a complete answer on that. However, if kids come back, we still must adhere to all of the state-issued requirements: daily screening by parents and employees, face coverings, social distance of six feet in classrooms, and we are also maintaining polycarbonate dividers in student cohorts in grades K through 8. So all those things have to remain even if we can test our way back in. And we are committed to testing our way back in. At this point in time, we have, I said earlier, we've tested about 700 faculty, staff, and students. We have one positive, and we have three tests that were considered invalid because the mechanism didn't work on the test. If you're in either an orange or a red zone, you have to provide a place to test. Our testing center is the middle school. It's drive-through. Depending upon the time of day, it only takes about five or six minutes to go through. There are nurses that we hired who administer the test, interpret the test, and then we provide those test results back to the Department of Health and the New York State Department of Health. If at any point we go back into a yellow, the testing regulations change from 20% per month to one set of 20% testing, and then you don't have to do it anymore as long as your level of positivity is below what the county level would be. If any member tests positive, they have to be isolated. So the one individual who tested positive had to be isolated. We have to notify the Erie County Department of Health of all positives. We also have to support their contact tracing efforts. And we have to put all of the information from the testing that we do in something called ECLARs, which is the database for New York State Department of Health. So now I'm getting to the point about the rationale for why the decision was made to not come back to in-person until January 4th. We began testing on December 8th. We've tested a little, we've tested well over 10% by now if we count today's results. We are confident that we will have 20% by the end of the week. We aim to conclude that this particular week, so we don't have to test over the break period. Now, this is the data that I used to make the decision to be more prudent and not open the weekend, the weekend, three days prior to the winter break. The Erie County Department of Health has reported to us, Clarence, 29 positive cases since we went into the orange zone designation. 23 of them have been since Thanksgiving. Last week, and at the time I wrote the letter, I hadn't had any of the, I hadn't had any of the reports of the positive cases yet. But over the first three days of last week, we had 12 cases, and we ended up with 14 total cases for the week. 14 total cases for the week is quadruple what the norm is for us. We have data every week on testing from the New York State Department of Health from the beginning of September until now. We've never had a week with 14 cases. We've never had a week with double-digit cases. We average between three, one to three cases. There are many days where there are no cases. So this was a, a number that jumped out and grabbed me and said, something is amiss. It's not the same as it has been. Now, it could be contributed to post-Thanksgiving surge. It could be contributed to other things, but one thing's for sure: we had never seen anything like that in Clarence. One day, we had six, I think it was Monday, we had five or six cases. By Wednesday, we had 12. It was concerning, and it led me to make a decision to be more prudent and see if that pattern repeated itself this week. Over 60% of the total positive cases reported for the year have occurred since we went into the orange zone. We've had 49 total cases. Over 29 of them have been since the time we've gone into the orange zone. So it has been a persistent increase, and that's what gave me pause and caused me to be more cautious. It's not that we don't want kids back in school. We do want kids back in school. I've been a proponent of that from the very beginning, and all the correspondence that I've written to parents has said that. What we want to make sure of is that it's safe. I do believe schools are safer than other places. However, if these four, if we were in school this week and we had 14 cases and we had to contact trace, it's not so much whether or not we believe one student is going to transmit it to another student. I think we have many of the mitigation factors in place that would, that seriously lower that risk. The one thing that does happen, however, is when we contact trace, it could be up to a classroom of kids, it could be up to one or two teachers for every case, and if we had 25 teachers or so contact-traced it as a result of this, if we could have dozens of kids contact-traced as a result of this, we might not be able to staff the buildings. So I had a fear of that. These numbers popped out. They were very different than what I'd seen before. I understand that some of the other school districts have had some similar numbers. I don't think anyone has had 14 in a week. I, I'm not sure about that. It's on the dashboard. You can go and take a look. You seem to have researched it pretty well. Okay? We never have. So for Clarence, it's completely different. And you can go back in and take a look at the dashboard since Septem, well, it's been around since, I guess, early October. But you can take a look at what our norm is and why this is so far outside the norm. So one of the questions that one of the parents asked was, what did the teachers feel about that? I can't remember who asked that particular question. Again, yes, some teachers are anxious and nervous. However, it's their job to come in. They've been doing a great job since the beginning of the year, I believe, with all of the things that we set up. We have all of the mitigation factors that are necessary. Masks all the time except for mask breaks. Everyone is six feet apart. That's the reason we have to split the day in the elementary. We can't fit all of the kids into a particular classroom and keep them six feet apart. Until those rules change, we have to maintain all of those mitigating risk factors. So, we're going to closely monitoring, monitor the testing that we're doing with people who have volunteered to have their children tested. Now, of course, those kids are asymptomatic. You would, you would assume that it's going to be a very low portion. However, we'll have a full sample at the end of this week, and we're not going to get to nine. We're going to test 800, about 800 kids. We're not going to end up getting to nine. We may get, we have one right now as a positive. We may get to two or three, but it's pretty evident at this point, we're not going to get to nine. We had two additional positives today before I came into this particular meeting. We don't know exactly how the trend is going to go with reports from the Erie County Department of Health. It could be like last week where we have double-digit positives. It might not be. I didn't want to take the chance that it would be and that we would have to quarantine literally dozens of kids as a result. We will reopen schools for in-person instruction on January 4th. We will. This is the year-to-date totals. Okay? The high schools had 21 positives, and you can see what has happened in the rest of the buildings. At the elementaries, it's relatively low. Harris Hill is a little higher than the other elementary schools. This is the community data. All right? When you take a look, it's trending up, just like it is in Erie County. And I listen to the Erie County press conferences every day, just like all of you do. These numbers are different than they were a month ago. They are a little bit frightening in terms of the numbers of positives being the highest that it's been in the county, and our two major ZIP codes are increasing as well. But the second column contains all the ZIP codes in Clarence. So again, I'm not saying that schools aren't safe places. I'm not saying that we haven't done the mitigation necessary to keep kids safe from transmitting the virus. I am saying that double-digit positives put us in a place where, as a result of contact tracing, and you never know. It could be three kids as a result of the contact tracing. It could be 15 or 20 kids as a result. You just, you have to go through each one individually and how they're, how they're being, how they're being taken a look at by the contact tracers for Erie County and us. We do most of it ourselves and provide it to, provide it to Erie County. So that's where things stand. And again, we will transition back to in-person learning. We will do it on January 4th. We know that kids have to be back in. For everyone who, who spoke, if you want to speak to me individually, or contact me, or call me individually about an individual situation with your son or daughter, I'm happy to walk through that with the building principal and get you some answers. Also, the points that Mrs. Leach brought up about homework and screen time, we have talked about those things. I will do it again. Okay? I appreciate the feedback. So, that's where it stands. Straight up, from me to you, the idea was double-digit positives is something we had never seen. It grew rapidly in a week. We did, I wanted to wait to see if the same thing happened this week before we bounce kids back into school and perhaps have to take them out because we had a staffing issue or because we got to nine positives in a particular building. I didn't want that to happen the week before we got on, into the holiday break. So, I'm sorry if you disagree with the decision. I understand it. I understand your feedback. I respect it. I hope you respect the rationale that I provided to you. Okay, Mr. Fuchs?
Thank you, Dr. Hicks. Before, if there's any questions directly to your presentation, does the board have any questions of Dr. Hicks? Comments?
I just have a comment. And I, in regards to our own testing, is that something that we can provide to our families, seeing that we are asking them to volunteer being tested? I, I understand that, that information is available. I'm, I'm sorry. Sorry. Is that better? Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. I, I said that I wanted to know if Dr. Hicks could provide our testing numbers separate from the dashboard so that we know what our school is testing, because our, the actual dashboard could be private school students or could be other issues, and place that on the website, seeing that we are asking parents to, in fact, volunteer to be, parents have their students voluntarily tested.
So just so everyone knows, the daily testing numbers are on the dashboard. There's a link on our webpage, our COVID-19 webpage, to the dashboard. They are done by building. That's the way they are reported, by the building principals. And the building principals report the day after the number of tests that have occurred through our testing protocol. If you're asking for a summary, which would say, this is what it is for the entire district...
Well, I think, I'd like to see the number of tests versus, as well as the number of positives.
They're already there by building, and we could give a summary by district. They don't, they don't summarize by district, but we could do that.
But it's, it's tests by, by Clarence, not just our buildings, on the dashboard.
I'm sorry, Don, I missed that.
The dashboard testing?
The dashboard has daily testing results.
But testing from the entire community?
Our testing. And one time per week, I send parents, we used to do it daily. I switched to one time per week when we went into the orange zone. One time per week, usually on a Saturday. This week, it was on a Sunday. I send what has happened through the Erie County Department of Health. Is that what you're referring to?
I can, so there's separate school dashboards. So there's the New York State school dashboard, and you have to click in each school.
Right.
To get those numbers.
But do those New York State?
So, just so it's not conflated, when we, when we report a positive in the dashboard, it doesn't matter whether that positive came from our testing or came from a phone call from the Erie County Department of Health. It counts as a positive for that day. And it's in the dashboard by building. We could put something out on the webpage that totals everything and says, this is what the testing has been for the district, just in our representative sample. If that's information that people would like to see, we will be transparent about it and provide it. Then you don't have to go and count every individual building.
I think that's what I've got numerous questions on. Like, so if we test 500 this week, how many positives did we personally get out of those 500?
Right.
Not so much even what school, but just district-wide, 500 is that one positive? Like, so it's hard to, for people to figure out, like, is it coming from Erie County? Is it coming from?
I get it.
Our tests? So I just think if it was in a simpler place, that someone can just look at it, it would be helpful.
We'll work on it. I mean, the way we, we report it is the way that it's necessary to do for Erie County and New York State, but we'll work on trying to have a simplified summary.
That's what I'm asking for. And then also, I know in our opening plan, we talked about closing by building, not by district. So is that still going to be an option as we move forward? Because I know one of the, the criteria that you had laid out was that, you know, the Clarence Center ZIP code was so high. Was there any consideration in just closing Clarence Center at that point?
Well, not according to the, not in my decision-making process last week. However, according to the regulations for orange and red zone testing...
It has to be district.
As long as you're testing less than 300 kids in a building, and even at the high school, we test about 280. That's our maximum to get to 20%.
What was the question?
Her question was, closing by building versus closing by the district. So the rules and regulations that have been published, and again, we didn't get them until late, a Fri, two Fridays ago. The rules and regulations are, if a building, no matter how many kids you test, as long as it's under 300, if a building has nine positives, then you have to close that building to in-person instruction. There's no clarity yet on how long you have to be closed. The assumption is two weeks because that's the quarantine period normally. That's an assumption. Okay? It might not be. It's been reduced to 10 days?
Yes.
Okay. So whatever that period is that they tell us, but it is possible, even when we come back on the 4th, that our testing or the Erie County Department of Health testing will yield nine for a particular building. If it does, then that particular building will have to close to in-person instruction. It's also possible that everything will begin to come down again, and it'll be like it was from September all the way up until near the end of November, where we didn't have any problems and things were smooth and things went well. Every once in a while, we'd have a substitute issue in a particular building, but it wasn't because of quarantining necessarily. It was just because of sicknesses between, of faculty. Okay? So that's where it stands right now. Any other board questions?
Any other questions?
All right, Mr. Fuchs, do you mind if I?
Could I ask one question first?
Go ahead.
I just, I want to re, make a comment and reinforce something you said. With regards, I know there's a lot of people that are unhappy with where we're at today, but I want to reassure everyone that Dr. Hicks, the staff that's here today, the staff that's in all the buildings, and this board has consistently taken a position to safely reopen the schools. And I think, as demonstrated by some of the things that were mentioned, but I want to reinforce, as soon as we understood that Erie County Department of Health was not going to support our testing efforts, we moved as quickly as we could to get the state license to get the schools reopened. Back last June, July, before we even had firm guidance from the state, we proactively started ordering Plexiglas dividers, PPE, additional supplies to make sure that we could meet all the guidelines to open the schools. So that remains an underlying goal that is ever-present, that we're going to do that. With regard to, well, one more comment, and I, and I don't know if we know the answer to this, but I know the quarantine period was mentioned just recently, 14 days versus 10. It's my understanding, and I, if anybody knows, the CDC reduced their... It's my understanding, and I, if anybody knows, the CDC reduced their guidance to 10, but the New York State Department of Health has still kept it at 14.
Right. New York State and Erie County have not yet gone to the CDC guidelines. However, Erie County is likely to come out with something else about contact tracing this week.
Okay.
So, um, when we discover that, we'll let it, we'll let everyone know.
So, the, the one question I had, just regarding testing, and again, um, I think the one thing, we, we don't have to like the rules, but they are the rules at this point, until they perhaps change again. The testing that we have to do relative to the percentages and the frequency, I just want to, um, clarify, if you could, the, the testing, the biweekly limit. So, if we have to do 20% in a orange zone to reopen, um, the way I'm reading this, is 10% maximum, minimum tested biweekly. And I guess my concern is if we're not going to test next week over the break, and we're doing 10% and 10% in consecutive weeks, are we still going to be in compliance?
We will. On the week of J- January 4th, we will begin again, and we will provide invitations to 5% of the families. So we have enough in the pool of people who have consented to be tested, where we can go a couple of months before we have to come back and have a retest. We're going to open it back up, and ask parents, and especially faculty and staff, to add their names to the, uh, to the pool of people who give consent. If they do, it could be three or more months, if we stay in this, I'm hoping we don't stay in an orange zone for that long. But if we did, uh, the more people that are in the pool, the less we have to come back to somebody a second time.
Thank you.
So I'll open it up to any questions that anybody has of me.
I just can't watch the numbers that are posted. I don't think anyone wants to remember this much. I don't know that I mentioned it often in the room. It was just very bizarre that these two, I think it was a senior in New York City, and we were notified we were going to open. And then all of a sudden, I'm like, "Oh, I don't know." I appreciate what you're saying and the numbers, but, I mean, honestly, I don't know if those additional cases were kids who went remote or were hybrid, those additional cases that we saw last week. Um, I do want to mention that you told your staff that the full set Facebook, that they didn't run back because of, um, because of holidays. Because I don't know how familiar teachers or staff, and that's not the stuff that we actually posted on Facebook, but I can't even get that out of my head, because I'm running around a lot. So, I appreciate what you say, and I appreciate that, but I don't think that's a sentiment that I would have.
Okay.
So, I want to say that, because it is very upsetting. I like watching what happens. I follow, um, the timeline of how everything happened, and that was just unfortunate. I am concerned that we don't know if the kids who did, or the staff that did have positive or remote staff, or...
Yeah, they were, they were all kids that would have been in school, or staff that would have been in school.
Do you know that there was going to be an increase in the kids getting...
Yes.
Whether you, whether, you know, so most of us want to be back in school, so most of us, like, this is the first year I ever spoke against them, and I didn't feel fine with the cause, but I followed the rules, and you know me, I don't like to be a little fussy, but I want our kids to be back in school. And, so I think you're going to always have that, and you're probably going to have that after break. So now I'm a little concerned, I want to come after break, and just to know.
And I understand that concern, and I'm standing here telling you that we're coming back on January 4th. The only thing that could stop us is New York pause. And that is unlikely to occur, because we haven't even been to a red zone yet. So, you know, I, I wish people didn't, or teachers didn't do things on Facebook, I'm sorry for that. I made the decision based on what I had here in front of me, because double-digit numbers gave me pause. It's my responsibility to make sure everyone's safe. I take it seriously. I absolutely believe kids should be back in school. Any of you that have contacted me and know me, know that that's my stance. I will get them back. And, as soon as we can get them back to real normal, which with not having hybrid, with bringing total numbers of kids back to class, with taking the Plexiglas out and everything else, we will do that.
And I, and I appreciate that, I just get so hurt to stomach, because the kids were in, when they had those numbers, being last week, they were, they were home for two weeks.
I got it.
They were already home for two weeks. But we have, we spent a million dollars in the virus. I, I truly believe that if the kids went back in school, and I looked a little bit at the family identity, we're about to, New York State, as they say, but we spent a million dollars in the virus. I truly think my kids would be safer behind those plus-plus dividers in school. Families would be safer. Kids would be vaccinated. So tell me right now, the kids are going to school inside of each other's homes, even if they're just... I mean, it's just, it's very frustrating.
Look, you might be right, and I might be wrong, but I made the, I made the best decision I could with the information that was in front of me. And I might be wrong about it. But I'd rather err on that side of caution.
I have a question regarding the nine positive cases. Is it the Erie County Department of Health who takes the nine, the number nine?
Well, they report them to us, and they come in, every day we have our head nurse, Hannah Muller, contact the Erie County Department of Health at about 12:30 in the afternoon. They then tell us, "These are your positives you've had that day." Now also, as the day progresses, if one or two more come in and they verify, they will contact us as well. The other way we know about a positive is that a mom or dad will call us, and, before the Erie County Department of Health. And the mom or dad will say, "My son or daughter tested positive, I, I need to let you know." Then we will give that name to the Erie County Department of Health. Then they will verify it, then we'll put it in the final number.
I'm just wondering if it was a state metric or a common metric? Because I know that, um, I'm sort of following the national movement of open schools, but I know from Montgomery County, Maryland, I think their metric is five positives to go 100 health workers.
Right.
And they've been, it's just interesting to see how others are doing.
Nine, nine came from New York State Department of Health. They make the regulations. Erie County Department of Health does the reporting. And they do the contact tracing as well. We do the contact tracing here. The rule, the rule was, if you're with, if, if Kristen was positive, and I was in the same classroom setting with Kristen for an hour or more, then I automatically would be contact traced. Okay? There's some other issues with it as well. There's likely a new rule to be created, which is, I, I need to be six feet, uh, or, and I need to have a mask on, and then it's still up to the contact tracer from Erie County to come up with other variables to determine just how many kids and adults are in that particular mix. So we do all the tracing based on what they tell us. We give them the names. We call the parents first, because they've been behind, and we can't count on them to get to the parents that day. So we call if you have a positive, or if you're being, if your child is being contact traced. And then a day or two later, the Erie County Department of Health will call. Ms. Scholter?
I had, uh, a question. I know that you're very confident, and starting to pull back up on the force, and that is our ultimate goal, and you have all great support, but I guess my ask is that, a lot of it depends on unknown numbers, right? But you were very confident, and you were going to go back to school, and you were confident, and all the teachers were confident, and some kids were totally let down. So I guess my ask would be, is there a rule to not, not, it's not like you're a job, but if you can possibly give these children, and you're not, you're not, but when you say, "Yeah, we'll mask them in the fourth," because that's not known right now, right? Like, we don't know the numbers, and if we watch the numbers, they're exactly the same numbers of the holidays, just like they were, and what they do. So, although you are the optimistic, and are cautious, and all the descriptions, you know, and confident, I, I will make you the chief of children and children's administration a little bit, and just say, "That is our goal, that is our goal." Like, not, yes, it's a hard fact that we are doing it, because these four kids have a possibility to be let down again. And I understand that there's a goal, but when you report it the way you are, I get confused. Yeah, but we're not too very fortunate, but the real, it's, please, there's probably a good chance they won't. And so, if you did, and were it, and it's, the teachers were like, "Hey, there's a chance we might not, but are we actually possibly going?" So these children are dedicated, like, yeah.
Fair enough.
Dr. Hicks, if there are additional questions from the room, the virtual audience is asking that they use the microphone, so they could hear it on YouTube.
Sure.
So if you have a question, please go to the mic.
I'm pretty loud, so I can handle it, I think everybody can hear me. What was the percentage of teachers, if you know that, that agreed to be tested?
Do we know teachers, uh, 70, about 72%?
72%.
So, it includes teachers and staff, and the, the number with teachers and staff is, is lower than that. But with teachers, it was 70?
It's about 72%.
72%.
And students was?
60.
In total?
In the first go-around that we've had. Any other questions?
I have one question. Would you find out, like, if they were a little positive, if there was a kid a little positive, um, would you find out if they went back for a second, if they needed another test? I mean, one of the reasons why they wanted to protect their kids, and I'm going to say that, is that, um, is not only because I don't let the government to manipulate control of all my freedom, but also because my kids are personal, and they hear that my voice runs constantly, that allergies are immediately, and I know that the record tests are good with, um, sentiment and both. So if someone didn't have positive, would we know that if they went back for another test?
No. No, we wouldn't. It would be reported as a positive. Erie County Health Department has to count it as a positive. And then if someone went back, I don't know if they tested positive again, if that then becomes a false negative, I don't, or a false positive. I'm not sure how that works. Okay, that concludes the superintendent's report. If, we will pause here, because I know there's young kids, and they may need to, uh, get home to bed. So we'll, we'll pause our meeting and let everybody do whatever they need to do. If you want to stick around for the meeting, please do.
Right, you have to move forward, Mr. Mancuso? So next on the agenda is the finance section for tonight. I'll turn it over to you.
Sure. We don't have too much this month. Um, the October reports are here. I did want to note, October obviously is the tax collection month, and, um, Erie County covers us for anybody who doesn't pay their taxes. And this year actually went better than normal. Normally, we have just under a million dollars of taxes that get turned over to Erie County, and then we don't get those funds until January. This year it's, uh, was under $900,000. As far as payments go, um, again, most of the ones that you see are special education placements. And, you know, one of the, um, pluses financially is the fuel costs are lower than they've, they've been in a long, long time.
Anybody have any question? Are you concluded, Mr. Mancuso?
Yes, next.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Mancuso? The only question I'd ask, and it, not, not related to anything you covered, but just refresher on timelines, um, and again, it probably, it depends, uh, because they've seemed to have ignored prior deadlines. But with the New York State, they set up, uh, time, time phases where they were going to reassess and to communicate if we may see an impact to funding this year, and I believe is January 1st the next threshold?
Yeah, the, um, the, the deadline would have been, um, you know, December 31st for their one, uh, go-through to make another change to the aid. They still have yet to come out with anything concrete, and while some aids they're holding back 20%, it still isn't a, a cut yet.
Thank you. No other questions? Could I get a motion to approve F-1 and F-2 in the finances?
Motion approved.
Thank you. The second?
Second.
Dawn's second. All those in favor?
Aye.
That carries. Instructional, Mr. Michelle?
Thank you, Mr. Fuchs. P-1 is a request for an unpaid medical leave of absence, uh, just as an informational item to the board, uh, that the low and moderate sports are currently postponed until January 4th. The high-risk sports are still not approved at this time. P-3, appointments, is a department chair for a short period of time because of the absence of the current department chair, TCI training compensation, and a mentor for a regular substitute that's continuing their service into the second semester. P-4 is additions to the instructional substitute list.
Are there any questions on the instructional items? Seeing none, could I get a motion to approve P-1 to P-4?
I'll make a motion.
You want to start a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Non-instructional?
P-5, amends a previously approved retirement. The member rescinded his retirement. P-6 has a total of nine resignations, six of which are retirements. Julie Cardella, teacher aide, 23 years. Donald Hay, bus driver, 10 years. Karen Nikter, bus driver, 22 years. Marsha Ratecki, teacher aide, 16 years. Mary Sykes, cleaner, 24 years. And Susan Smerata, teacher aide, 15 years. Thank you to all those employees for your service to our district. P-7 is unpaid leaves of absence. One is personal, one is medical. P-8 contains two employees that are returning to service and their request. P-9 for appointments this month. We have two clerical positions, one monitor, one bus driver, and one lifeguard. P-10 is just an informational item that we have annually. It is the change in the minimum wage. And P-11 is the additions to the non-instructional substitute list.
Any questions on non-instructional? Seeing none, could I get a motion to approve P-5 to P-11?
I'll make a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries. Uh, Dr. Hicks, special needs and student activities?
Uh, 34 community and special ed meetings, uh, eight preschool meetings, mostly IEP changes at this point.
Any questions of the board? Could I get a motion, seeing none, to approve items S-1 and S-2?
Motion approved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries. Uh, we have no board development on the agenda for this evening, uh, which brings us to the second public comments session, if anybody has anything additional to what was already discussed.
There are no questions in the, in my email at this time.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Lori White. I live at 4480 Patricia Drive. And I wanted to come here tonight as a family who started off the year going to school hybrid, um, unexpectedly had to quarantine for two weeks, and then most recently went remote. I want each one of you to know that with every change that our family had to go through and re-figure, the kids' school, and their principal, and their teachers, and their staff, couldn't have been more helpful. And every time, you know, when we were reaching out, they were responding to us to say, "What else can we do? What else do you need?" And I think it's important to recognize the level of staff that we have in Clarence, and I feel so fortunate for that. You know, I have two opposite ends of the spectrum kids. One is thriving with remote learning, the other one's going out of his skin, wants to be back in school. We all want the kids to be back in school, but I appreciate all the efforts to make the situation bearable, and to work around families and changing circumstances that are beyond all of our control. So thank you very much.
Thank you for that feedback. Is there anything on the line? All right. Um, in our packet, we have a list of upcoming meetings, uh, for everyone's, uh, calendar. Uh, January 25th will be our next regularly scheduled board meeting. Uh, that will begin at 7 o'clock. In this room, that will be also the first meeting where we start to talk about the budget for the next school year. Uh, the board does have a mid-winter, a mid-year, a winter retreat on the 23rd that is scheduled as well, for, uh, development efforts. Any other comments or questions before I entertain a motion to adjourn to executive sessions? So I guess I'd entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss the employment history of a particular person, and to discuss collective bargaining negotiations with the Clarence Teachers Association.
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.